I'd like to call this evening's Finance Committee workshop to order. And, um... If you'd like to do a roll call, please.
Um, Scott asked for a roll call. Dr. Rupp?
Here.
Mr. Ricard?
Here.
Mr. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Wilkenbill?
Here.
Mr. Fuentes? Mr. Hagberg? Mrs. Funk?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Solicitor?
Okay. Rural Council had an executive session tonight from 6:30 to 6:55 to discuss litigation matters with the solicitor, legal matters regarding the borough's social media policy proposed, a proposed property acquisition, and personnel matters under Section 708A 1, 3, 4, and 5 of the Sunshine Act.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
We have Mike's presentation first.
Okay, we'll do Mike's presentation. So then we're going to have item two of the Fire Commission.
Are you asking for, if anyone had public comment?
Yes.
I do.
Well, after.
Wait till after the commission presentation?
That's fine, I just didn't want to...
Yeah.
Sorry about the confusion.
My apologies.
Okay, so we're going to go with the Fire Commission study. Attorney Miller? I... Just so everybody knows, this study's been a year and a half in the making. There's a lot of work going into this, and it is not yet approved by the Fire Commission. So this is our preview and so forth on it. It has to be approved by the Fire Commission prior to any further action on it.
If I could clarify?
Please.
It has to be brought forward to council by council members that are on the Fire Commission. So that's the committee that studies, is looking at this, and will bring it forward with their recommendations when they're prepared. So...
So just like any committee, Counselors Kraft, Greenholt, and myself will hear it. We've already seen it, will deliberate over it, and then come back to council for a recommendation. So you're just getting the meat of it before because of, here's an opportunity.
Thank you, President Rowland, and thank you, members of council. My name is Michael Miller from the law firm of Eckhart Siemens. And we partnered with the Pennsylvania Economy League in working on this study. I have a short, I hope, slide deck to go through that kind of highlights what is... President Rowland said a much larger study. So I'm, I think the slide deck's available to you guys. It's up on the screen. And I'm just going to ask the gentleman over there, because I was not part of the AV club in high school, to advance the slides for me if they would. So the next slide, please. As the talking heads once musically asked, "Well, how did we get here?" Here's how we got here, the next slide. The Fire and Rescue Commission began in operations in 2018 through an intergovernmental agreement between Hanover Borough and Penn Township. It does compare, combine paid fire and the emergency medical services from both municipalities under a single command structure. And so both entities don't have to pay for a separate command structure, and there is a savings in doing that. There is a seven-member governing commission with both Penn Township and Hanover Borough represented. There are fire assets from both municipalities given to the commission. Currently, the commission splits its costs 50-50. There is a budget procedure which is set forth in the intergovernmental cooperation agreement. And theoretically, if there was a combination that would be more permanent, there would be, they would take over operation of all the fire units, which they don't do now. Next slide, if you will, please. So this is the breakdown of the operational fire calls. There are 83 of those calls that go to either Penn Township or Hanover Borough, with West Mannheim getting 4%, Heidelberg Township getting 3%, and a 10% of other, which include, I didn't know this, going into Maryland occasionally to provide support in operations. So we cross the border. The majority of calls are medical assist, followed by fire calls, and then the rest of them are either motor vehicle accidents, debris removal, or other. Next slide, thank you. You guys are great. Here's generally what we found from our study is that the operational strength of the regional commission is that we're not struggling for volunteer service as much as other similarly situated municipalities. It is an absolute truism that the ability to get volunteer firefighters is at an all-time low, and it's been difficult in lots of other communities. It does provide us with a, I think, a viable manner in which we operate from a command standpoint. There are a couple of things that I think that people need to understand. We kind of have a hybrid model right now. Right now, the firefighters are employees of the municipality that they were hired by, either Penn or by Hanover, not of the commission. They are either one or the other. Whereas, by comparison, the EMS staff is employed by the commission, because that was a smaller combination. The financial management currently is overseen by a voluntary commission treasurer slash chief. There was a business administrator for a portion of '22, '23, and a part-time accounts receivable, accounts payable. And there is billing by EMS staff. But I think currently, the situation is not ideal in the sense that there is not enough support currently at the commission to do all of the HR, do all of the billing, do all of the budgeting work that it could be. And that is something that, as we move forward, if you move forward, is going to have to be addressed. There's a great deal of cost and, I think, service provided by both the township and by the borough currently on the HR function and on the budget function. There are a couple of challenges as we move forward. One is whether or not the financial model, and I'll get into that a little bit more, is sustainable at the 50-50 split model, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And we're not solving that tonight. This is just an overview of kind of those issues that this report talked about. There has been a long-time pay disparity between Hanover and Penn Township firefighters. That is the fault of no one, other than the fact that Hanover has been a unionized fire service for much longer than Penn, and therefore has had a contract longer than Penn. And that, that difference, although it is narrowing, still exists. We still don't have a single collective bargaining agreement, although we've come close to it. One of the challenges of this study is to look at the cost of full integration. And part of that full integration is going to, as I've already identified, we're going to have to take a look at some of the back office responsibilities that the commission would have to take over for them to really be sustainable. So there are a couple of recommendations I want to get to. Our joint recommendation, the Economy League and Eckhart Siemens, is that the consolidation under the commission model remains a very good operational solution. From a command staff perspective, again, you guys are getting a value of having one command staff instead of two. It does provide more options and more coverage. We do think that down the road, as you move forward with this, you're going to have to revise the current commission agreement with regard to cost distribution potentially, budget approval, and commission composition. Right now, there's a break on how much you spend at the commission that's provided by the review that both municipalities provide separately. And there's a certain check and balance in that model. If you go to a full commission model, you, I think, all parties are interested in making sure that that commission stays within its budget expectations and its resource expectations. And I'm not sure that we've solved that yet, but that's a problem you have to solve for. And I'll talk a little bit more about cost distributions. In addition, we think the commission, the agreement ought to be revised to go back to base budget, to a zero-based budget every single year, instead of building on the prior year's budget so that we can make sure that there's a certain amount of fiduciary responsibility. My colleagues at the Economy League believe that, as with the library and other municipal services, that there ought to be a serious conversation with some of the municipalities that get a lot of mutual aid service that don't pay as much. And I think that's an ongoing conversation, an ongoing discussion that ought to be had. Now, I don't think we can solve here today the question of whether those entities would be willing to buy in in whole or in part into a commission model simply because they're getting 4% or 3% or 5% of their services. But it is true that you are providing services on a kind of a long, a broader situation. I've mentioned before, I'm going to keep mentioning it, because it's a concern of ours that the HR function and the financial management function need to be consolidated, and it needs to be consolidated in such a way that you have confidence in the numbers, the projections, and the expenditures, right? So once you, if you combine and you launch this entity, it's got to be fiscally responsible and report back in a way that you feel comfortable in doing. And I think that that is something we're going to absolutely have to talk about. And that may include the hiring of either a professional non-uniform or deputy chief in charge of kind of operational issues. As always, the Economy League, you know, doing their, this is their art for this. We should make use of grants, incentivize volunteers, and fee-for-service revenue. Now, let me just say, fee-for-service revenue is a little bit of a unicorn in this entity. I mean, it would be great to get fee-for-service revenue, but that's going to be a much longer process, and we're going to have to really be realistic about this. One comparative model is YALFER. The York Area United Fire and Rescue entity in Springingsbury, Manchester, formed in 2008, which was Spring Grove-Springingsbury combination. That took about two years to combine their CBA. Manchester has joined, joined in 2014, and they are still working under their own contract. And what, what I take from that is, there's no one way to heaven, right? There's no one method by which a commission structure has to work. In this particular case, Spring Grove and Springingsbury work under a single CBA. Manchester does not, but they're still part of YALFER. And so we can, we can do that in different ways. Their, their biggest issue is pension issues and some, there's some contributing factors. The next slide, I think we skipped ahead. Can we skip back? Oh, no, I guess that's out of order. All right, well anyways, go to the next slide, please, thanks. YALFER costs, interestingly, are divided on size. So YALFER costs are divided by the size of the municipality, and their share of the budget is done by size of the municipality. And that's something that, I think, as you go forward with the commission model, that's something we have to talk about, right? Is, is various resources and various size differences. And so you see that in 2012, it was 45-55 split. '13, it was 40-60, and '14, it became a three-way split with Manchester, Springingsbury, and Springs Gardens. And when we see, parenthetically, when we see police commissions, Northern Lancaster, for instance, they use units. They buy units of sale and so on and so forth. So there's a bunch of different ways to get home. But there have been YALFER budgets which have been rejected recently for increased costs. So again, that's something that happens. Next slide after this, please, thanks. Just look at a couple of projections. The differences you'll see in the green is the status quo cost with projections. And again, these projections are our best-case projections. They haven't been audited or verified, but they're our best-case look. At status quo, the cost goes somewhere above to, close to 3.2 or 3.3 million by 2027. With integration, stays around 3.5. And as separate, stays a little bit below 3 million. My colleagues at the Economy League believe that that's not statistically significant or the difference is not that, that much. And they also believe, and I don't disagree with them, that the service provided is, is significant. Next slide. The, I will say that as a best practice issue, the current commission budget process is a little bit more generous than the state of budget practices. The current approval process, if one municipality rejects the budget, the commission operates within its current budget with adjustment for personnel costs and expenses. In a perfect world, the state sample agreement requires consensus by October 1st and a period of discussion, and that's certainly something that we need to talk about. In addition, best cost really does require some sort of cost distribution method that's a little bit more than 50-50. So it's whether it's demographic, whether it's by call, whether it's by some other metric. There's probably something that needs to be adjusted as we look forward. Where we've seen these fail is where there's been kind of just a 50-50 split based on, you know, some sort of generous or general understanding where eventually, six or seven or 10 years down the road, somebody who's a party to the commission feels that they're not getting the value, right? Because it doesn't really reflect their use of the commission. And so I think, again, that's an ongoing conversation. So, you know, you see 100% population base, 50% population, 50% valuation, 50% total taxes, 25% population, 24% market valuation. And again, I mentioned already the possibility of unit value and things like that. So in figuring out fair share, there are just a couple of comparisons that I'd like to remind people of. The assessed value here at Hanover is 990 million versus 1.2 in Penn. The population in Penn over the last 10 years has grown with housing starts. The difference between the median household income and the poverty is also significant. When you look at the two communities, the median household income is statistically bigger in Penn by about $25,000 or $26,000. And on average, that's, that's a big change. And the poverty number in Hanover is much higher, which means, of course, your tax base is different. base is differently impacted, right? Now, I've been doing this for a long time, and every borough I know says that they're landlocked, like a borough's going to have a navy or something. But what it means is that they're not going to develop out farther, and they don't have the commercial development where a township may have that opportunity. And that creates a disparity in, you know, what people can pay to support services. Next slide. This slide is difficult to see, but if you take a look at this, these are some projections, again, back-of-the-envelope projections, not completely verified. There are a couple of data points that I think are significant. If the, if the, if the, if the contribution by the borough was a three-mil dedicated fire, right, the no more than three mils, this is what we're going to pay, that's it, that's our stop, right? And property values remained exactly the same, then the chart shows you that the total cost for fire service would remain at around $3 million, and the commission would have to adopt itself to what the value of the mill is, again, generated from a stagnant or equal property value. Interestingly, the mills for all general fund functions, including police, right now is 3.08. So if we did three mills for fire service and 3.08 is the total millage for police and everything else, that's, that's a big number. And that's just a reality. Then the next slide, I think this is the right slide. This slide projects if property values would increase 5.4%, then the amount available to the commission would increase as property values increase, but they'd still be capped. You know, it's just the, the model you would use by using a dedicated millage. So they go from 3 million to 3.2 to 3.3 to 3.5, again, depending on the increase in the value. And just another slide, the total revenues is, I think, $17 million. The current cost for public safety fire is 3, and public safety police is 4.2. And so that's, you know, a fairly large part of the dollars that you spend is public safety services. And this is no surprise and no criticism. Public safety services are the most, or one of the most expensive things that we do. It's also what residents expect. But it, as those portions of the budget grow, the question always remains in a commission formation or when you have an independent commission, unless there is some requirement to zero-based budget and to have some limit, top-end limit to what you spend, there's the possibility of kind of a runaway cost. So those are things that I think we have to address as you move forward. So next steps, one quick slide. I think the challenges going forward is deciding what the right command structure would look like. Does that include a business office? I think it has to, if you're really going to have a workable commission, a business office able to do the things that currently the borough and the township have been providing. And by the way, if we put a cost on that, that cost would be significant in terms of the resources spent for the commission by the borough and the township to provide support indirectly for its operations. If you're going to have a truly effective commission, you're going to have to figure out a way and a cost assigned to replace that so it can be effective and efficient. Obviously, there's going to be a cost for the combined CBA for yearly operations and future growth, which, again, gets back to the thing, and I'm sorry that I sound like a broken record or a one-string guitar on this, but there has to be a real discussion about the funding formula, which makes it equitable for both sides, so that both sides get a fair deal and that it reflects the reality of both communities economically and what they use. I think of it this way. This report, I think the questions that we had before this report were, what does, what does this really cost? What are our challenges? What are the things we need to put in place to make this work? I think this report starts to answer those questions in material ways. These are the things you probably need to do. These are the things you need to look at. And those are policy decisions you have to make after you digest this report about how you move forward so you could make this work. What I will say, having been part of commissions that have both succeeded and failed, is that you have the opportunity to lay the foundation for the house in a way that would support the future work of a commission that would work. Those are going to require some choices and some tough discussions. But I think what this report does is materially move the ball down the field in terms of cost, in terms of structure, in terms of validating that if done right, this can be a plus for both communities. If done imperfectly, it's going to be a bad marriage, which ends in a bad divorce. There's a way to get to the good part of that, using the guideposts that are set forth here. So I think it's been more than a worthwhile exercise. I do want to say, lastly, that the people at the Economy League deserve a lot of thanks for the data that they put together. They're not here, they should be in that regard. And then, you know, as always, Margie and Amy and Jim and the fire professionals at the commission, but particularly Margie and Amy and Jim deserve some credit for, one, listening to a lot of my dumb questions, but, two, being patient enough to work through the process of getting from point A to point B with this report, because it's taken some twists and turns. But I think, again, the effort has been worth it. I think we have a much clearer picture of the opportunities and the challenges in front of us. And so that's my report. And if I, thank you for not gonging me like the Gong Show from the 70s, because I know I've probably gone over time.
Yes. On the volunteers.
Yes, ma'am.
Which are part of the commission. At one time, we had 300,000 volunteers. We are now down currently to about 38,000. Is that correct?
Across Pennsylvania, you mean?
The volunteers.
Across what?
What region?
Across PA, yeah.
Across PA.
Yeah.
I think that there's, it's, I don't know the numbers specifically, but I, it would not surprise me that your numbers are absolutely correct. What I will say is, there's, it's, it's, two things are true about volunteer fire services. They're all dedicated to their craft. They do great work. And trying to combine them is kind of like trying to bring peace to the Middle East. Everyone has their kind of own view of how their volunteer services work. This corner of the county has been, again, with the commission, been better at that than most, but we have real problems with volunteers. Not their willingness, and not their desire, and not their professionalism, but the fact we just don't have enough of them. And, and, and the calling that it used to be for a lot of people just hasn't changed and just isn't the same as it is. So, yeah, that, I think your number is right. Your concern is right.
I'm going to have to shut down. We agree with, we're going to be questions on this.
Okay.
This was just the.
Oh, I'm available for executive session or further meetings.
And I know you want to work.
So when are we going to discuss in more detail as a council?
So the, we're here for the game plan. So this is being communicated through the fire commission to, of course, your representatives, as well as then those from Penn are going to hear this tomorrow. And we're going to start to have these discussions, and certainly we're going to come back to council with it. It'll be a council decision, but we're going to try to work through it in the work group environment, if you will, to see where, how far we got.
So are these three financial models that have been presented here going to be actually done for comparison? Because right now, the one that was shown was on a millage.
Yeah.
But not on population or split of millage and population. Because we have to recognize.
Some of the topics we're going to.
I'm just asking if they're going to be done.
So our, our representation for the borough is half. We hope that, you know, we can adopt an opinion and a path forward through this that Penn will support and endorse collectively together. That way, this, we can arrive at a successful outcome. If we can't, then we may have problems with the commission.
Do you have any suggestions? They should certainly be submitted to our representative, which is Bill and Tim?
And Gary, yeah. So, and we will be reporting, we will be reporting back as, as a council report as we wade through that, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rowland. I'm going to ask to be excused.
So most certainly are.
So I can go to Royal Farms and have dinner.
Okay, so now, we'll go into the public comment.
You have a list there. You have a list there.
You're fine. I'm busy.
Name and address, please.
Good evening. Art Becker, 529 Carlisle Street, Hanover, PA. On September 27th, 2023, at the Borough Council meeting, you might recall Attorney Jennifer Zerfing from my office was here. She requested whether the $9,000 expense for the rental property registration inspection program study was part of the 2023 budget, and if not, whether it was authorized by Borough Council before the contract was signed in April of 2023. So we now know that the $9,000 expenditure was not part of the budget for 2023. The contract was signed before there was approval by council. This violated the bid procurement contracts and purchasing policy adopted by council in September of 2022. We also believe it violated the Sunshine Act. Someone on council, we do not know who, directed Mr. Miller to sign this contract without a public meeting, without a vote, without any opportunity for the public to object or discuss either the expense, the report that was supposed to be generated, the purpose, anything about it. Now, tonight, those responsible for violating the Sunshine Act are trying to cover their tracks and approve the contract six months after the contract was signed. In order for someone to bring, withstanding to bring a violation of the Sunshine Act, we need to know who on Borough Council directed Mr. Miller to sign the contract in April 2023. We're concerned that perhaps a few council members are pushing this forward behind closed doors. Borough Council doesn't want this ordinance. 15 to 20 meetings ago, when I was here, Mr. Hegberg made a motion to adopt a rental unit registration and inspection ordinance. Not even Ms. Rupp would second it. Borough Council doesn't want it. The landlords don't want it. The residents don't want it. And except for a few people that have come to a few meetings, the tenants don't want Over and over again, we're here to talk about the rental unit registration inspection ordinance. Now, now we're talking about a survey. It's a solution in search of a problem. What we need to know in order to bring a Sunshine Act violation is who on Borough Council, what Borough Council members directed Mr. Miller to sign this contract on April 28th. In the interest of transparency, we would like to know who is pushing this issue forward behind closed doors in violation of the Sunshine Act. We hope that you'll give us the names of those individuals at the Borough Council meeting next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coppersmith?
Audrey Copperstein, 412 Osage Drive, Cherry Tree 4. Anyhow, a quick update on Cherry Tree 4, since I wasn't able to be for last month. I was at my nephew's wedding. Anyhow, we still have many, many things that need to be accomplished. The work finally started this week for the lady's house that was damaged back in July, beginning of August, to get her house repaired with the doors and the drywall and so forth. So she's been waiting months to get that work done. And they, I guess there was a debate back and forth as to who was responsible, even though they said one group was responsible because of the drilling and so forth from the sinkholes. So needless to say, she's been living with that situation for many months now. Secondly, we have many things that still need to be addressed in Cherry Tree as the building continues, as they try and finish out the last couple of buildings. To my understanding, the ponds have not been signed off on by York County Conservation District, but I'm trying to figure out why they were able to close in some of the area. I know I have addressed this with council to try and get your advice about what to do with regards to if they're not signed off on and they're not functioning the way that York County wants to do it, who's going to be, even though it hasn't been signed off on with the developer, who's ultimately going to be responsible? Because to bring in heavy equipment, how are you getting it in there if you've, you know, cornered it off with houses? And then, lastly, with regards to Cherry Tree 4, we have many, many things that, I know I spoke to Mr. Mainz last week at Planning Commission about the punch list that needs to get done, with regards to many, many things that need to be done in Cherry Tree and that it will be worked on. But some of these things are just pictures that were addressed in July and August of 2023 with some of the patchwork, including some of their vehicles parking right on our curbs and busting up our curbs. And we're just trying to figure out who's going to make sure that, you know, these things, and this is just one street of the many streets that we have in our development that have not been touched since the initial repair work was done in July and August. And as we get to colder weather, you're not going to be able to do ceiling and all of that fun stuff, not to mention, you know, the road paving and so forth. So we just want to make sure that, in fact, the residents are informed of when this punch list is going to get done and, like, the timeline for that punch list, so that we can make sure that, I guess, that we have some input into making sure that our development is the way it should be prior to the builder pulling out. The last thing is having to do with the upcoming deadline for the borough with CT5. It's my understanding that no one has received any updated plans of any kind. The deadline is December 27th. My concern, again, is the fact that many people have spoken to the fact that we do not want this development and the damage it would do to the development, and the fact that none of the issues evidently have been addressed, that have been brought up to the builder, so, and no additional plans have been presented. So we want to make sure that, in fact, this doesn't kind of slide under the radar, just like the application did for the initial development in the first place. So being that it's December 27th, we all know that here it is October, and you get into November, you get into Thanksgiving, and you also get into December with Christmas and Hanukkah and Kwanzaa and all of that. And we would just want to make sure that, in fact, everybody's on the same page and is informed about what's going on in the community. Many houses have started already going up on the market in the single-family homes, and a number of them have actually sold as a result of what's coming, proposed, or the stagnant of the fact that these, nothing has happened in the many months that we've been all sitting, waiting. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Last but not least, Mr. Holt.
Thank you, sir. Council chairman, council members, thank you. Talk about the budget.
Just name and address, just for the, because it's being recorded. That's okay?
Robert Holt, PO Bucks 1131, Hanover. I'm in the third board.
You have a physical street address?
I don't give it in public for personal reasons. Talk about the budget. Start off real quick. I think a 50-50 split on the fire commission is maybe not equitable to the borough. And I was surprised when I heard that. And when I think about all the development that has been going on in Penn Township, the increased housing, particularly the types of demographics that put stress on emergency medical services, I'm just thinking, where's the equity in a 50-50 split? Now, when I was at the budget summit or budget conference meeting the council had, you know, it was not 50-50 when they needed five firefighters, and three were recommended for the borough to pay for and two for the township. But I just think you need to ask you to look hard and close, and I know it's a tough decision. It's a hard thing. It's a new operation, relatively new operation, and take a hard look at that. I'm also going to ask you to oppose the resolution that's in your agenda on the fees and charges. It seems inequitable. It seems inequitable. It seems like there's, you know, there's like a 10% increase across the board for refuse collection. And it just seems like, well, they said, we haven't raised garbage rates, collection rates in 10 years, so we'll just take 1% a year and average it out. At the same time, there's development fees and other things, stormwater management fees. There are no raises in those fees. And so I'm just asking you to take a hard look and reconsider. Finally, during that budget meeting you had, Main Street, Hanover, said they were not sustainable unless they got another $10,000 in contribution from the borough. And I took a look, and I'll give to you for the record truncated versions of it, the Form 990s that have to be submitted to the Internal Revenue Service every year by a 501(c)(3) organization. And the first document on top of that, it's the end of the document when you look at it for the record in the IRS, is the Supplement Zero or O, Schedule Zero, and it shows the deliverables that the Main Street organization has provided over the last three years for which these records are available through 2022. And then it shows you the costs and how much they carry over in net revenues from one year to the next. I don't think they need $10,000 from us. And in a year when we're taking, when a lot of people are facing economic hardship, this, it's, you need to reconsider that. And so I thank you so much for your time. I know it's a difficult job. I think you all come to the table wanting to do the best job you can, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment. We have no one online, correct? All right. Takes us to item four.
I just have one thing under public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me, I forgot.
That's okay. It's my pleasure to introduce to you folks Lizzie Baldwin. Lizzie is our new library director, and I'm going to let Lizzie come up and introduce herself and tell you all a little bit about her.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Yeah, so I'm Lizzie Baldwin. I'm the new library director, as Margie said. I'm really excited to be here. I'm from the area originally. I graduated from New Oxford, and I moved out to Sealems Grove because that's where I did my undergrad at Susquehanna University. And I'm really excited to be back in the area that I, you know, in the library that I grew up in, in an area that I grew up in. And so I won't, I won't say a whole lot, but I'm really excited. Thanks for having me, and if you have any questions, comments, concerns, you know where to find me.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you. Okay. Now we'll go to item four, consent agenda. Can I have a motion for, to approve the consent agenda as posted? Or do we want to pull out item D?
Separate it.
And split it into two votes? I'm assuming, is that a yes?
Yes.
We have.
What was that?
Want to pull out item D, 4D? This is the approve the salaries for the library director and the fundraising manager? And have two individual votes for those?
Sure.
Split those, okay.
Okay. So then we'll do that. So I need a motion then to approve the salaries for the new library director?
You're just going, you're splitting this now?
I'm going to split them into two votes.
Okay.
Consent agenda first.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda first, Scott.
All right, well, then we'll do the consent agenda.
Minus that.
Minus D. So 4A through F, minus D.
No motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Who's, who seconded?
Chuck seconded.
Chuck.
Okay, thank you.
Tim and Chuck. No discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 4D, split into 4D dash one and two, I suppose. One is approving the salary for the library director. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Who's opposed, Gary?
Gary's opposed, okay. Motion carries. 4D dash two, approve the resolution for the salary for the fundraising manager. A motion for that?
Motion.
I can make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Okay. Barb and Chuck? Thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor signify aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. No.
Opposed.
Okay, so.
Are opposed.
Darlene, Gary, and Carol?
Carol.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that's, we still have, motion carries.
We have seven in favor and three opposed.
No, Brian's not here.
No.
Okay, Brian's absent.
Six.
Six in favor.
Six in three.
All right, so that motion carries. That concludes the consent agenda. Item five, the budget update with Finance Director Shelton. Step into the barrel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Here to provide you an update on the budget. You should have hand, handout that, already handed out, which is the October 18th summary budget update. Just wanted to have an introduction to the, for the budget review tonight. I wanted to discuss, first, at September 20th at the Finance Committee meeting, I presented the baseline 2024 budget. And we, which included a 3% growth of non-compensation benefit, of non-compensation and benefit expenses and a flatline growth of revenues from levy taxes or fee for service revenues. We discussed the importance of long-range planning and forecasting and maintaining sufficient financial reserves to meet our operating and project expenses whenever possible and avoiding borrowing and paying interest expenses when necessary, if necessary. We discussed the impact of the general obligation debt and the major equipment leases that impact our cash flow over extended periods. We had at the September 26 workshop that we held at the library, the council had an opportunity to hear directly from the department directors concerning the various upcoming projects, their performance during the current year. I provided the council with a complete baseline budget for your review as well as a options schedule on different rates of fees from the increase of the millage to water, sewer, and refuge. So that tonight I'm going to review the summary, updated summary recommendations from Borough Management for the 2024 budget. That includes expense refinements that we've taken into consideration since the previous two meetings and proposed rate adjustments. Margie and I have worked closely with the department directors in a collaborative manner to move forward the goal of a consolidated balanced budget. She's emphasized the importance of leveraging grants to offset the cost of necessary project expenses and to minimize or defer any unnecessary expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. So I'd like the council to open up their summary budget document.
Yes?
Yes. One says October 18th. It's a 14 pager. So what we're going to go over tonight is proposed rate adjustments for council consideration, comparison with other municipalities to borough rates, a sample of an in-borough resident impact analysis, review of the government and proprietary funds financial impact and proposed rate adjustments, and then next steps for the council. So turning to page three, this is the proposed phase-in borough real estate tax adjustment. So for the 2023 fiscal year, we discussed in the fall of 2022 a millage increase. We had discussed a one-mill increase. At that time, the council decided that that was too steep of an increase, and we wanted to phase that in. So we did phase in a 0.44-mill increase for the 2023 tax year. And that was a 7.7% increase over the 2022 rates. We're recommending for 2024, 50% of the remaining millage to get this towards the one-mill rate. So we're recommending a 0.28-mill increase, which should benefit us an incremental $284,000 for 2024 fiscal year. I just wanted to say as a side, kind of a sidebar, if you go to the back of the document, you'll see the York County October 3rd valuation, which gives you the tax basis valuation of apartment, commercial, farm, and industrial and residential, residential properties. There are constant challenges to tax basis, and we just received from York County, we've got six commercial properties that have won on appeal and reduced their tax basis by $6.8 million. That's going to impact the Hanover schools by $156,000 and it impacts the borough at $41,000. So we, our tax basis for real estate is shrinking instead of growing.
How many of those have we had this year?
I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a number, but as far as the materiality, $6.8 million is probably the biggest chunk. These are big commercial properties. Sam's Club, Aldi's, Kohl's, the mall, and Cherry Tree Court professional buildings. So it's, it's been a big increase.
Company, was something changed in the law, I believe? Correct?
Something changed with the law? I, I don't know the genesis of the appeals were.
That's what it was. So it was one of those things where the school district tried to fight it, and we went and basically lost because of some change in the law.
Yeah, this was a big issue eight-ish years ago. I'd been to a couple of the hearings when I was on the school board, and I thought it didn't stop.
We did try to fight it, though, the school district.
Yeah, they did. And they, and I think they were going to try to appeal it again.
We are.
So. But I just wanted to bring that up.
Well, you guys win automatically when we win.
They, we.
Take your bags.
Well. All right, if you turn in your deck to page four, this is concerning the water rate. So the boroughs, over the recent years, has put a lot of effort into the upgrade and modernization of its water facilities and infrastructure to ensure the water quality and our ability to scale our operations to meet customer needs. The recover of these long-term investments is through our usage charges to our growing base of customers each year. For our customers outside the borough, the recent PUC rate case that went into effect, I believe in March of '22, permitted us to recover some of those fees. Our in-borough residents have also benefited from the modernization of our water system, but not, have not had a rate increase since 2015. We believe this is, believe a rate increase is necessary to address continued operating costs, increased operating costs, and it's also to assist with recovery of our major water system investments. So if you, you look on page four, I give you the breakdown of the different customer types, the number of customers we have, their annual usage in thousands of gallons, what a quarterly billing is right now, and what an annual billing is at the 3.16 rate. The proposed rate of 3.79 would increase revenues by $800,000. But it would still put us considerably lower, 32% less than the outside-the-borough rate, which is at 5.01 per thousand gallons usage.
And where is York Water?
Pardon me?
Do you know where York Water is?
York Water, I will, actually I have another slide where I have comparative. York Water provides services to other municipalities, I can, I can mention that. I'm also, I'm on York Water myself. I know I pay three times as much as the borough, so, for my water. Turning, turning to page five is the sewer. As you know, the sewer, it basically is charged based off of the water usage rates. Again, our sewer rates have remained unchanged since 2015. We believe a concurrent increase in the sewer rate should be undertaken along with the water rates. You can see what the quarterly impact would be for customers residential on a quarterly basis would be $20.45.
What's the rate per thousand, like you have here, the 3.19 going to 3.79?
You wait a couple of slides and you'll see that.
Got it.
You'll see it in the comparatives. Okay. Page six is, is actually part of the miscellaneous fee schedule. I just wanted to bring this to your attention. So the increase that we were proposing for the individual, single residence is 7.50 per quarter, when you're $30 a year. That's the increase of the garbage services. Again, the refuge rates have not increased since 2012. They were actually reduced in 2019 when the stormwater fees were introduced. Need a rate adjustment to offset our increased operating and capital cost. You'll see later in the deck that the proposed rate is very competitive as compared to the surrounding municipalities. Moving the rate from 70.50 to 78 per quarter is what our recommendation is to the council for consideration. So page seven, so Scott, this is the slide you're looking for. I chose a few municipalities for a summary, for a summary comparison of their rates compared to the borough for the sewer water end, and the refuge rate I had to normalize the municipalities' rates to coincide with the use of measures and the rate thresholds for comparative purposes to, to the borough rates. For example, you know, Gettysburg bases their usage rates off of cubic feet of water instead of thousands of gallons. And obviously, the different thresholds for the rates, base rates are different. So I normalized those. So if you look, take a look at the sewer, for the first 7,000 gallons, you can see where we fall. Even with an increase of the sewer rates, we're still within a competitive range of most of the municipalities, with the exception of Manheim Township. However, you can see the incremental rates, you know, beyond the first 7,000 gallons for the next 18,000 gallons for Manheim is 10.99 for, per thousand gallons versus 8.92 proposed for the borough. So overall, we, we think those are competitive. Water, similar situation, had to normalize that activities. And you can see, for the most part, we're competitive even with our increased rates. For the usage rate from 3.16 to 3.79 is fairly competitive with the rest of the municipalities. Again, it's not an exhaustive, comprehensive comparison to other municipalities, but you have to also understand that the cost structure for the different municipalities is different. Some of the municipalities, their citizens are serviced by third parties, which you have a lot, a lot less control. Obviously, for keeping our garbage rates for so low for so long, we do have better control of it. But you get to the tipping point where the costs, we have external costs that come in that we have to feed into what we're doing to provide services. It's only so much we can take before we have to look at price increases. Ten Township, you'll see on the refuge, looks, that looks a little unusual, but you convert their bag rate to the equivalency of what we have, which is, you know, three 30 gallon cans a week per quarter. So if you convert their $6 a bag, you'd be paying $216 a quarter for the same level of service from the borough. But the other, you can see the other quarterly rates from the different municipalities are in the range. We're still in a very competitive, equal with Lancaster City if we do move to that rate, if it's. All right, if you move to page eight, I've put together a sample of a residential customer. The property tax value, probably in previous presentations, you've seen the average property tax value was higher. Well, we were including the commercial, industrial, residential, apartments, everything together. So what I did is I took out really the apartment, the residential, to really represent individuals that are residents of the borough. The average size of our households, according to the last census, is 2.27 adults per home, and at a 5,000 gallon per person per quarter, that's about 45,400 gallons of water. So if you take down, look at the chart below, this is going to be the annual increases for the, this individual household, for property taxes, water, sewage, and garbage, and of course, there's no increase in stormwater. So.
$10 a month.
$112.85 a year is the increase. So when you think about, when you think about these rate increases that we're talking about at a macro level, it seems very high, but when you take it down to an individual and what the impact is, $112 is 30 cents a day. So it's not that, not a material amount, in my opinion, so. Going to page nine. So the comparison on page nine of the two charts provides you the highlight of the revenue categories that would be affected by the rate proposals. You can see that the total governmental funds revenue increases to $19 million. Again, this is with real estate, sanitation, it should include the tipping fees that are in the new miscellaneous fee schedule, license and permits. So those are the areas that would have rate increases that I wanted to point out. Page 10. Now, the page 10 is a consolidation of the governmental funds for income and reserve comparison. So the chart at the top is no rate increases. You look to the farhand, right-hand side, you see no rate increases, what the reserves are, and what the net loss is. Right now, the governmental funds, without any rate increases, are projected to have a $4 million net loss in 2024. That's $4 million that is, would reduce our general reserves next year. So with the rate increases that we have proposed, we've, we trim that projected loss down from $4 million to $4,063 down to 3.299 million. Again, that's not a balanced budget, but this is on a standalone basis just for the governmental funds. So I wanted to point that out, that, you know, these rate increases are not automatically erasing the deficit, but it's moving towards improving and closing that gap because we really want to get to a balanced budget at some point.
Just for clarity's sake, when we say the governmental funds here, this is everything minus water and sewer?
Right, you see at the, actually, you see at the top of either of the charts, it's the general fund, it's what's left of the ARPA fund, which is blank because we've used the ARPA funds up. It's the library, liquid fuels, recreation board, library endowment, recreation endowment, and then our capital projects funds for all the governmental funds. So it's a consolidated.
Basically, everything except water and sewer.
And stormwater.
And stormwater, pardon. Okay, just to be.
And HEDC.
Trash is in here.
Trash, yes, trash and codes and permits and all that are all included in the governmental funds.
Thanks.
All right, so if you turn to page 11, page 11 is a comparison for the revenue categories that we are proposing, the yellow highlighted, which is the water revenues and sewer revenues. So we go from a $19 million with no rate increases to 20.7 million. You turn to page 12, that's the consolidated view of all the proprietary funds. Each of the proprietary funds, and I think I mentioned at the last meeting, we set up separate capital projects funds for each of the proprietary funds. That's our piggy bank for our long-term debt, our capital outlays, and saving money for projects. Our main funds, the operating funds are for our day-to-day, so that's why we have those set up separately. Without, without any rate increases, again, the proprietary funds are more of a for-profit business, so we are balanced there. Without the rate increases, we have a $426,000 profit, you know, based off of $19 million of revenue. If we do have the rate increases, we'll go to a 2.178 million net income, and we'll obviously, we'll increase our ending reserves for the proprietary funds. But when you look on a consolidated basis between the governmental funds, which is a $3.2 million loss with rate increases, and the proprietary funds, which is a $2.1 million net profit with the rate increases, we still have a $1.1 million deficit for the consolidated entity. So we're really, even with these changes, we're backsliding a million dollars in 2024. We've really looked very closely at the expenses. I know rate increases are painful. It's not something anyone wants to hear about, but as I've talked about, we, there've been decades that we haven't raised rates, and so you can only go along so long with that before you go out of balance. And so we're at a point, we're out of balance, and so this is an attempt to close that gap. Okay. So page 13 is really kind of where we are in next steps. So if we were to, the council were to consider any of these changes that we've just discussed tonight, we'd obviously have to prepare ordinance and resolutions for any approvals. We would incorporate any other changes in the budget as necessary and update the formal budget book for the council review. In the month of November is really the reading of the budget for 2024. We have to advertise the budget for 10 business days, and then we go for an adoption of the budget in December of 2024. Those are the next steps we have. I didn't, I did not update the master budget schedule until, you know, decisions are made and what we're going to do, but as soon as we do make those decisions, then I will publish a revised budget for the council and provide that to you, obviously before the next session and at the next public session, the next finance committee. That's what I have, so any questions? I know I went through it pretty fast.
You did indicate that even if we raise the proprietary fund and the governmental fund, I may be using the wrong terms, we're still at a loss, am I correct?
Correct.
So are you proceeding that probably next year, we would also raise rates as well?
Well.
Or is this a one-time deal?
Well, for the, for the millage rate, we're splitting the, last year, we had discussed going a one-mill increase, we only went .44. So we were discussing splitting the millage increase over the two years, .28 for the next two years. We, I think, looking at all of our other utilities, it's something we need to look at on a regular basis. And Margie's emphasized this, that we need to be, you know, fiscally responsible with our money. When we do have necessary expenses that we go, have to put forth, we do look for opportunities for grants. You know, a grant's not a guarantee that you're, you're not going to spend money unless it's 100%, because most of our grants are matching, but we need to be smart about it, and we need to plan, and not something that's a decision that's made right away. You plan it down the road. So we want to be in a situation where we're trying to save more money as we go to pay for projects, and when you do, you save your money, then you, and you don't have to raise rates as often. But we also can't stick our head in the sand and say, hey, you know, we can't raise rates for 10 years at a time, that's just not really sustainable, so.
We did raise the millage rate last year. I don't know if anybody came to complain. Did anyone come to complain?
I didn't hear of anyone.
I didn't hear anybody, nobody complained to me.
I think it was .44, so.
I'm looking at Amy because I wasn't here.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I don't recall, I mean, we just raised the millage rate, that was it, but I don't recall anybody complaining to me.
Right.
Or we did weigh the occupation tax, too. That kind of helped ease the pain.
Well, and this year, too, we're eliminating one of the, what's just the tax we're getting rid of?
The occupation tax. I think that got rid of.
Or is it?
Per capita?
The per capita. Yeah, it was, that was taken to zero rate for 2023.
Do we know the school district's raising taxes?
No.
No.
No, we don't know, or no?
You don't know?
No, we're not planning on raising taxes for 2024.
That's very helpful, thank you. Thank you. You've done a really nice job of explaining this very clearly, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I believe, I believe back down at the top a little less for the next one. So.
We're on to item 6A.
6A, correct. So at the September 20th budget meeting, I did put a line item in there to request a temporary loan from the general fund to the water fund due to cash flow constraints related to our overrun on the Shepherd Myers Dam and our debt payments, but I failed to get it into the following council meeting, so I wanted to provide a formal request in the memo form for approval for that temporary loan to the water fund from the general fund. We plan on about $200,000, that loan will be returned to the general fund by the end of this year, and my target is to try to pay back the balance of that in 2024. So it's a short-term loan, it's not something that, I know, Scott, you had asked about whether we could impute any type of interest into that, it'd be something that would be eliminated in consolidation anyway, and it's not, we discussed it with our CPA consultants, and it's not as standard practice as he's seen with any other municipalities in the state of Pennsylvania.
Thank you. So we need to have a motion.
Can I ask Jim?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Jim, I'm sorry, one question about the loan. It's, it's more of a transfer from one fund to another.
Yes.
Transferred, transfers are actually considered P and L events. This is a due-to, due-from, so it's a balance sheet event, so that there's a receivable on the books from the general fund, and there's a liability on the books in the water fund. So it's all balance sheet, there's no P and L effect.
Okay.
Net income effect.
It's a revenue anticipation loan, is that what it would fall under?
It's a cash flow constraint loan.
Okay, so we need a motion for 6A.
So motion.
Oh, I'll motion.
Motion, and a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item 6B, 2024 real estate tax millage rate. This is the incremental increase that Jim just reviewed of the .28 mills. Need a motion?
Motion.
And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Is there, is it, if we were to spread this out over a longer period of time, Jim, what's the, in other words, .2, .5, you know, instead of, and is this going to be 24 and 25, or are we going to be looking at this for, the same path on 26, 27, 20? That's what I'm just.
This is second. The one-mill increase that we originally proposed on 23 was actually split. We only took .44 of that, so this is splitting the remaining .5, 6. So what it does is, anything that we extend out, we'll just widen our deficit for next year. And along with the challenges with, we've already lost another $42,000 from these five commercial properties that have won their appeal.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second?
I just have a question, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm just trying to think of the total increase that we have, so I'm just thinking someone who makes, what, 126 or 100, whatever that rate is per year, which tax is more fair to them, the property tax or the rate increase? I'm trying to think which one would benefit people that don't have, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question.
I would say the property tax, because the rate, the rate increase.
The rate is consistent.
Well, the rates are driven on usage.
Driven by usage.
So you can theoretically try to minimize that, but.
Jim, Jim broke it down, the taxes are, this is per year on the average house. Now, if you make more money, in theory, you have a more expensive house. This is assuming a $128,000 house.
Well, if you have a lot of kids, you're going to lose a lot of water. I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm just trying to figure out which one's more fair. I don't know if there's an answer, depends, I guess it depends on each person.
This is the average tax basis of apartments and residential properties in the borough as of October 2023. So this is not the market value of houses, this is the tax basis, which is always normally lower than the market. And the total of the property, the water, sewer, garbage increases are $113 a year, so that's $9 a month per household.
Yeah, I read that. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, yeah, yes.
I'm with you. Okay, so.
We have to vote.
Right.
You got a motion on the floor. You got a motion.
We've got a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Item C. Margie, you want to handle this, or?
I mean, I'll read, I'll read the motion. I have Eric prepare to come and do a little, but the motion to approve resolution number 1380, approving the purchase of real estate located at 3337 Frederick Street, Hanover, Pennsylvania, under the terms and conditions of the agreement for purchase and sale of real estate. Now, Eric's going to fill you in briefly on why we are talking about purchasing the property across the street. Eric?
So let me try to get you all up to speed and try to condense maybe about three years' worth of work into about two minutes, so I'll do my best here. Some time ago, this council started off on a path of looking at your public facilities, your public admin, public safety, your water resources, and your public works. That journey has taken us many places, we've looked at many things, we've been guided by an architectural firm who's helped us ask the right questions, look at the right things, and ultimately where that ended up a few months ago is we were looking at a new combined facility on North Street. This is the property that is currently the Public Works facility. And so we had begun down that path of really considering that that was going to become our ultimate home, where a new admin and a new public facility would go. What started to cause us some concerns and some problems with that is, if you recall also, we were fortunate enough to get a RACP grant, so we were able to get a $5.5 million grant from the state to help fund, and to do that, we were bringing into the equation as well, some of the ARPA money that we had received through COVID, and we had, as a council, you guys had converted that to a capital building fund. So the problem we ran into is we have a new administration now in the state, and they are streamlining and pushing a lot of things. And so while we were trying to sort of delay some of the efforts moving onto North Street so that we could evaluate everything and so that we could ultimately find a new place for AJ, because the Public Works certainly would have to move before we could be there. And what we found was that the new administration has really sort of expedited a lot of the processes, which is good, but what they're doing also is they're taking away the ability to say, hey, I want to kind of hit pause, I want to sit on this money for a little while until I figure some things out. That's not the way they want to do it. They want you, spend the money, spend the money or give it back, and we certainly don't want to find ourselves in that position. So just through sort of fate, the building across the street became available, and we started to have a sort of aha moment about maybe there was an opportunity to actually stay downtown, that we would not have to move out to the North Street site. And in staying downtown. And in staying downtown, we had already, about two years ago, actually, looked at this building that we sit in tonight as a new public safety facility. That we had already gone down that exercise. We had laid out some floor plans. We had looked at some costs. But the fly in the ointment was where would admin go? And that kind of led us off on our path of looking at a combined facility. So once this opportunity across the street presented itself, we started to kind of re-look at that and think, you know, there's an opportunity to perhaps co-locate and be over there, have a new facility here, and have them function unified as one sort of a community center, a community complex. So we vetted that through RACP. They were agreeable to that. You know, that's, that's not going to create us any issues. That certainly helps us preserve our funding, and it really helps us to expedite our timeline. And that's really what it comes down to, is this offers us an expedited path. I mean, again, we've been talking about this for three years. I could build two buildings in three years' time. So it's time to move from the talking phase into the actually doing something phase. And this acquisition of 33 Frederick for council and for this community does that. And so the other things that I think are interesting that carries with it is, it allows us to keep yet another building from becoming an open vacant building downtown. We certainly would try to keep all of our buildings vibrant. That's not to say the borough's going to buy every building that comes up for sale, but here's a unique opportunity where it benefits us and it keeps a building from becoming a vacant blighted building. It also offers us some things we had not been thinking about. In our new combined facility, we certainly had some community space. We didn't have anywhere near the community space that's available to us in the new facility. And so we're looking at how can we take advantage of that to offer something even bigger and better to the community? And the joy of all of this is, we can do it in the same cost structure that we were going to do anyway. So we're still able to do it within the funding that we have available to us. And that's just a truly unique sort of thing that's happened. And certainly, if this council moves forward and decides to, you know, go through with the acquisition of this building, I think it ultimately moves the borough where you want to be.
Also gets us ADA compliance.
Among many, many things.
So motion.
Second?
Before, before council votes, this is not our usual practice for this particular resolution. Tonight will be the vote. It will not come up at the next meeting. So tonight is the vote for this resolution.
We have a motion and a second. We're going to have a roll call vote.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Reckert?
Four.
Mr. Greenhold?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Four.
Mr. Hegberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Absolutely.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenhold?
Yes.
Okay, we have nine voting in favor of and zero against, so the motion passes.
Eric, before you exit, can you, can you discuss what we are doing as it relates to evaluating parking?
Yeah, so when we, we look at this new building, out of the gate initially, parking is sort of a net neutral. You have a parking facility here. It serves this building. It will simply serve us in a new facility over there. However, it does certainly lead us into a conversation that's been happening, sort of concurrent with the streetscape efforts, which is looking at parking sort of holistically and around the area we're at. And so one of the things that we are doing with this acquisition also is, we want to look at sort of a master plan. We want to kind of look at these two buildings, how they relate to each other, but we also want to look at how they're supported. We want to look at the lot beside us and see if there aren't improvements we can make to that. And we sort of want to look for other opportunities as well that are in close proximity. And I think right now, there's probably about three or four different options of things that we're looking at. Each of them carrying with them certainly their own things we'll have to work through. But to your point, we want to see if we can identify and augment some of our parking so that we can offer better amenities to the people who come to our facilities.
So until we resolve that issue, are we able to accommodate ADA parking or handicap parking where the chamber would be? Is there somewhere where we would have?
I believe so, yes.
In the alley or something?
I believe so, yes.
Because we got to remember, the chamber is going to be in the back of the building and the parking lot is all the way over here. So that's something that needs to be built into what we're doing on that front.
Certainly, we've looked at multiple things and concepts and floor plans and things, certainly to vet those for you, but there are, there are some things we still need to go through, but ADA would absolutely be something we would look at.
The elevator is in about the middle of the building.
Absolutely, yeah. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it doesn't fall off the table.
I will not let it. How about that?
All right. So motion carries. Item 6D, the proposed fee resolutions. Motion to approve that. So you want to?
No. Pick it out.
Okay.
I think it's important to note that the fee resolution being proposed in front of you is part and parcel of what Finance Director Shelton just presented to you, which I'm a big fan of this packet and the other packets that he has made, breaking these things down, explaining where they fit and how. It's, it's certainly made this an easier process, I think, for all of us. One of the things I would like to point out before we ask for questions, as you can see, the increases down through of the, of the fees in the schedule here, I think it's important to note, as we talked about in the budget presentation, the increase in the refuse fees. So as Finance Director Shelton presented, one of the things to point out is the $7.50 per quarter increase in residential refus. This is approximately a 10% increase. If you look down through the fees, you'll see the refuse services, both residential and commercial, have been increased 10% throughout. Now, this was not an arbitrary number. We didn't pull this out. Obviously, as Finance Director Shelton presented, there hasn't been an increase in over a decade, and there are increasing costs every year. But the main driver behind this is the York County Solid Waste Authority. So the York County Solid Waste Authority is where we have to take our refus, and they run the York County incinerator. They gave us notification just before our budget presentations that they are raising their rates 10%. So this created a $240,000 unplanned expense for our refuse system. Director Shelton, again, with one of these nice little packets, broke down for you what that 10% increase would bring us, and that would help us to cover, it actually would cover that shortfall. So I think it's important to note that that 10% increase from the county passed down to us is the main driver for the 10% increase in that fee. I know, Eric, if there's any fees that you wanted to point out?
No, I mean, certainly the ones that fall underneath the purview of planning and engineering. I mean, as we do every year, we go through, we look at permit volume, we look at costs, we look at our staffing, we look at the resources that it takes for us to do the various tasks that we list, and we try to make sure that they're fully covered. You know, we're not looking for them to build windfall profits. They're meant to cover the costs. They're meant to cover the efforts and the resources that are needed to do those things. And so we, we go through each year and sort of line by line, look at those things, and then we also take in, you know, the outside costs that we're subject to. You know, we have our permitting platform is what we call software as a service. And so certainly, when we do those sorts of things, those costs go up. You know, those providers that we buy that service from, you know, they increase their costs. We simply follow along with them as well. So most of the permits that we have through ours, that's where they are. The only thing I would point out, as you look through the building permits, is, you know, you'll see the larger proportions of where resources are expended and where the larger costs are, are associated with the commercial in nature. And certainly the residential, we, we kind of put them each in their own pile when we look at them to make sure that we're not shouldering the load of commercial processing on the backs of the residential processing. So we're very careful to look at those and make sure that that works out. But that's largely where I was at. We did actually get rid of a couple fees. We got rid of a road reconstruction fee that's been plaguing me since I came here. Apparently, we had the system where someone would pay a certain lineal footage when they would do curb work or something. We basically just tell the owners or who does the work, if you tear up the street, you put it back. Don't pay me to put it back because certainly AJ has other things to do other than fixing other people's streets. So there doesn't really seem to be any sense. So we, we lined it out and just put a note in there that, you know, you're responsible for your own costs with that. We did also get rid of, we were carrying master plumber and journeyman plumber licensing fees. We don't administer that program in the borough anymore. I think at one time, this borough was a testing site and facility for the journeyman program under plumbing. We don't do that anymore. So there's really no need for that fee to be in our fee schedule. We did add a fee under sewer for industrial sewer testing. Our staff takes time to go out and collect industrial samples of wastewater, and that was being absorbed just by the borough through the sewer program. So now we're basically saying, look, if you need that sample, here's the fee to do that. Again, trying to make it so that the services are directly being absorbed by the people who are using the services and not necessarily by the community as a whole. Other than that, our couple, we had some rate adjustments as far as some of the staff, just to try and, again, get them in alignment with where I think they need to be.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Does anyone know the last time these rental rates were raised at the market house? I don't think they're bad. I don't think the fees are bad. I'm just wondering, was it just a year or two ago we raised them or has it been a long time?
Every other year, it's a very small, it's been a very small increase, I believe, on an every other year pattern.
Okay. I thought we had raised them recently.
It's, what, like $12 or something a week per stand?
But it's not bad. But I mean, we're encouraging more people to be in the market. I just don't want to price ourselves out of the market.
Absolutely.
The prices aren't bad.
This, this was part of what was recommended in the market house study. So those fees were all looked over, and this was the beginning of those increases.
I mean, the annual rates aren't bad at all.
Correct.
No, thank you.
But I guess we're, we're being asked to do an up and down vote for all of these fee increases.
Correct.
But I don't, I'm not in agreement with the refus.
Vote no.
So I don't, I mean, to be asked to take the whole thing, the whole pill, I think that's, I think that's an issue.
Well, let's, let's vote on it as it's presented as the group. And so can I have a motion as for item 6D?
So motion.
Motion and a second for as presented?
Second.
Second. Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
We have two noes.
Yep. Okay. So it's chalking. Who else?
Darlene.
I thought Darlene made the motion.
Darlene made the motion.
It's not uncommon.
Okay.
So 6D carries. Seven in favor, two opposed.
Right.
As presented. All right. That closes item six. Let's go to item seven. Councilmember and committee chair reports as we go through. Dr. Rupp?
I have no report. Just somewhere, I can't find the paper right now, but I know we have a meeting coming up. There's a date somewhere on the agenda. I don't know what it is.
It's here November 7.
Thank you very much, Margie. Thank you.
That's the public safety and the.
Correct.
Yep. Governance is the sixth.
Thank you.
Correct. Mr. Hegberg?
Great meeting last week. Whenever it was. Forget what day it was last week.
The 11th. Last Wednesday.
It was a great meeting, good, good turnout, lots of good comments. It was very well done by the, by Dewberry. So I guess we're still collecting.
Streetscape was well done, I.
Yeah. Still collecting comments, I believe, and we'll evaluate them once it's all done. Report by the end of the year, I believe.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reckert, water and sewer?
Our reservoirs would certainly like to have some more water, and I'll just make a plea to continue to be good stewards of the resource. Tendency, human nature, is as we head into the cooler months of the fall through winter that we forget about that. Generally, water uses just go down, but we are still in the midst of a very concerning event that we should be monitoring and trying to conserve, cut back where we can. If you need proof, go out and look at our reservoirs. You'll see what I mean. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Kress, public works and facilities?
We meet in November.
All right. Dr. Rupp already commented on governance. And fire commission, Mr. Kress?
We meet tomorrow, but basically going over what you guys were presented today in the first part.
All right. Close the seven management reports, number eight. Anything to add?
Additional?
Additional? Any correspondence and information that's, wasn't already?
I remember a couple of months ago, maybe back two months ago, someone came and talked about the Hanover Against Hunger, and I know I talked to Mayor about, I think some people at work in the borough timed up to do a shift. And I was just wondering, it's November 4th and 5th, it's a two-hour shift in the morning, two-hour shift in the afternoon Saturday, and Sunday is a two-hour shift sort of following church, sort of 12-ish. And if anyone on the council wants to sign up, there's still 44 slots open for volunteers, and we still need $11,000 more dollars to, we're getting there. But if anybody wants to sign up, I would be happy to sign you up, and you can go to the group and, you know, get your picture taken if the council cares about Hanover and hunger. Be good PR.
Okay. So any questions?
Let me know if you want to get signed up. I can do it for you.
Contact Dr. Rupp.
Thank you.
That brings us to any additional public comment. Do we have anyone online?
Well, I just wanted to say one thing about just commending our police department for the press conference we had Wednesday, where after a two-year investigation, we had 37 people arrested in a drug ring. So I just want to commend that, and it was a joint effort between Hanover PD, Penn Township, Northern Regional, New York County Drug Task Force, and the FBI. I don't understand why you're there, but.
Chief Martin deserves a round of applause there. And the whole team.
The police department relates to the gas industry.
Well, now, so you've set the minimum for next year. We're looking for four year more.
You did.
All right. That, we have no, no one online. Any additional public comment from the room? Mr. Ward?
I'm sorry. Thank you for your votes. I disagree. Your handling the taxpayers across the board, they're not responsible for some of the fiscal decisions that have been made over the past couple of years.